I'm in the weather so nice, it's so quiet right now. Sitting next to the lake right here, and I'm enjoying the weather so cool.
It was only time for that girl. Oh, do you remember that summer? Because I remember that summer. We were cruising by, sitting here, it was raining. My girl, remember the night and day? She thought I forgot you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I got you, lady. Said I've got you, babe. Ooh, I got you, baby. I've got you, baby. Got you, lady. Yeah, I'm going to go with you, baby. Remember that time in the summer? You looked so good. Baby, you looked so good, so damn good. Maybe we'll never get tired of another. Like I know we should. Your body's like you, feels like you, yeah, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. I've got you, baby. Said I've got you, hey, yeah. I got you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I've got you, baby, yeah. Ooh, said I got you. I thought you knew what I want you, baby. Baby, she is skinny because we keep it. All the time, all the time. We're chilling in the boxy, boxy. Still, yes, we keep it. All the time, all the time. That's all I'm sure. I can run. 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 It was only time for that girl. Oh, do you remember that summer? Because I remember that summer. We were cruising by, sitting here, it was raining. My girl, remember the night and day? She thought I forgot you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I got you, lady. Said I've got you, babe. Ooh, I got you, baby. I've got you, baby. Said I've got you, hey, yeah. I got you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I got you, yeah. I thought you knew what I want you, baby. Baby, she is skinny because we keep it. All the time, all the time. We're chilling in the boxy, boxy. Still, yes, we keep it. All the time, all the time. That's all I'm sure. I can run. 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 That's all I'm sure. I can run. 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 Baby, you're special. Let me tell you that your love is beautiful. Something that I really miss you. Ain't nobody ever willing to. Ooh, baby, you're so sweet. Too much for the rest of it. I wanna tell you that this is. Oh, I'm gonna be a part of everything. I gave you your treasure. And I give you my love. Baby, this is something just a little. Baby, everything you do. And everything you do. I show them that I'm quite good. I can run. I can run. I can run. I can run. Something that I really miss you. Ain't nobody ever willing to. Ooh, baby, you're so sweet. Too much for the rest of it. I wanna tell you that this is. Oh, I'm gonna be a part of everything. I give you your treasure. Baby, this is something just a little. Baby, everything you do. And everything you do. Cause I show them that I'm quite good. I'm in the weather so nice, it's so quiet right now. Sitting next to the lake right here, and I'm enjoying the weather so cool. It was only time for that girl. Oh, do you remember that summer? Because I remember that summer. We were cruising by, sitting here, it was raining. My girl, remember the night and day? She thought I forgot you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I got you, lady. Said I've got you, babe. Ooh, I got you, baby. I've got you, baby. Said I've got you, hey, yeah. I got you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I've got you, hey, yeah. I got you, baby. Ooh, I got you, baby. Said I've got you, yeah. Ooh, said I got you. I thought you knew what I want you, baby. Baby, she is skinny because we keep it. All the time, all the time. We're chilling in the boxy, boxy. Still, yes, we keep it. All the time, all the time. That's all I'm sure. I can run. 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 Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. When it all falls apart in the dark, will you come crying too? If you are, will you say who you are? You would know I'm trying to. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose. Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove. Say you love me but you hate me at the same time. Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine. Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove Say you love me but you hate me at the same time Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose When it all falls apart in the dark, will you come crying too? If you want, will you say who you are? Even though I'm trying to Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose Ain't always in the right like right now, a lot for me to prove Say you love me but you hate me at the same time Said I love you but you told me that you ain't mine Take a look at my lifestyle right now, a lot for me to lose
You want something for your time man, I need someone I can vibe with Nobody out here is right to, constantly fucking and fighting Pressure is built in with diamonds, I need something I can hold to Stepping away from the old juke, girl I see that you ain't playing with Top of your game but you standing, homie we rock with the same beat Can't take it, can't take it, can't take it, bye Soon as you rich, they think it's for everyone, think it's for everybody Nobody fuck that, tie me and the rest of the red wrist I'm trying to tell you I'm tying me, boy I could fuck on your mommy Nobody here gonna stop me Bitch you not tell me to grow up, money the government owes us I know this life is a whole one Cuz I've been here before, been here before, been here before I stand on all tests so don't act like you can't hear me wrong You wanna be TV like P Diddy, bitch go fuck the floor And if we fuck like one more time, let's do it on the floor I don't want none like BFF, girl you can hold for more You want something for your time man, I need someone I can vibe with Nobody out here is right to, constantly fucking and fighting Pressure is built in with diamonds, I need something I can hold to Stepping away from the old juke, girl I see that you ain't playing with Top of your game but you standing, homie we rock with the same beat Can't take it, can't take it, can't take it, bye Soon as you rich, they think it's for everyone, think it's for everybody Nobody fuck that, tie me and the rest of the red wrist
Persian rocks, but she's from Nicaragua I choose Persian love Are we turning up or are we wasting time? Girl don't waste my time, you know I'm party I don't just wanna chill with you, oh no I wanna turn up on, I wanna turn you on I wanna lay with you, that's the least I might do Fuck I look like I don't wanna chill I kissing you, I want you to feel How you feel it babe, can you feel me babe? Can you feel me babe, can you tell me babe? Kissing you babe I feel you right Loving you there Loving you right Fuck with a bro Come baby fuck with a bro When you gonna let me know? I've been kissing you slow Down down, down down, down Have him down down, down down, down But you're lying and I make you feel right The way you talking girl, I'ma focus all night Ooh no no, I wouldn't lie to you I wouldn't mind you
Ay I was there when you needed me, I held you down Risking my life taking trips on them grey hounds No matter the situation, I stayed down We was there broke together, we getting paid now We hit the mall and go crazy now Gucci loafers with the buffer, all because I hustled Sneaking buying shit, have them looking puzzled matching fits off the butters Yeah that's how we dug it, I love it, yeah These other niggas can't touch him, we be fucking, I be running I feel it all in my stomach, got him public, yeah That's my baby and I love him, never put nothing above him, ever Girls be getting at him, I ain't tripping cuz I trust him Give him half of what I got cuz when he flip it's going double, bubble Yeah I'm talking money so long, all I do is sit and pray that he make it back home And this, it's us against the world Me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down It's us against the world, me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down Ay I remember what you showed me, remember we dropped them rollies? My lover, my one and only, my baby, the one who told me that them bitches wasn't real Most of them is phony, and all I got is you, my word and my money Never think we just dropping, me furs and prodders His and her watches, got a bottle of projects Paid for my tuition when I was up there in college That's my nigga with the bottom, tripping, who got a problem? Hands all in his box, this is Buffy's, they be so chockled I kiss him and tell him love you, he sneaking cash in my wallet Buying red bottoms, just to say we got it Friend named Ny, read scriptures out the bible He be miles away, I like to text, I like to Skype him I'm the one that he be wiping, y'all other bitches can stop building pastas Can't stop us, can't knock us, we came from the bottom Now we up top, and this, it's us against the world Me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down And this, it's, it's us against the world Me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down Ay yo, tell me that you love me, I tell you I love you back I rub your back, I give you kisses I hate when you smoke them blacks, you notice that I'm the real Them other bitches is whack, I put that money in the safe And you still hit me with stacks Face front, I be sitting all on your lap Tugging on your zipper, I know the neighbors can hear it You do it right, you hit it where I can feel it Little days, ain't little, look at me, I'm getting thicker I shop for my nigga, I pop for my nigga, he be gone I be holding down the block for my nigga Pushing the latest whips, blunting up with the tents I was scared but I learned, now I hit you with that shit Chilling with that bitch, I wasn't tripping on that shit Cuz true be told, you know that's my dick Regardless what they think, I'mma be always with you I love my nigga, and it's just that simple And this, it's us against the world Me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down And this, it's, it's us against the world Me and you together, I'mma always be your girl I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down I said I'mma hold you down, I'll never let you down You know it
One for the wild, two for the fool 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 ティックタオルフルカード七色に光る雨が降るだろう華里坂の天気図は晴れだ来世記を演じるは誰だ現実は何故だこんなはずじゃなかったのかこんなはずだったのかそうそう破壊破かない戦い今日も中央線は温かい使った形を変える放射線時は無情まるで放射線上越た時間で価値観が価値観でもお前顔本が泣き止んでもなぜに誰のために One for the wild, two for the fool 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 地球の八割は若者が占める街の中でグッドモーニング全ての時を預けたイベント俺にはかなりディップな事件簿ただ祈る明日の空不安だらけの生活の中に映る今にも割れそうな鏡大仲間と交わした想いが温く気持ちに水を注いだ 方やDJ、方やプロデューサー 俺の前だけでは街嘘ような共に棘を抜き合った闘志必ず奪い泥じゃねえか勝利その時はまたあの仲間で白髪混じりのあの酒場へ One for the wild, two for the fool One for the wild, two for the fool One for the wild, two for the fool One for the wild, two for the fool